My name is Sean Klein, I'm a local resident. I'm a former BBC journalist and very occasionally I do this sort of thing. So I've promised not to do my best Jerry Paxton impression this evening. So we'll keep it nice and friendly. So tonight, well, the elections are due in Cambridge City, as you know, coming up just in Cambridge and around the country, on the 2nd of May. Fourteen of our seats in the city are up for grabs. And there's also the Cambridge Police and Crime Commissioner. But tonight we're going to talk about the political side of things. One of the seats is up for grabs, do come and join us, welcome. Here in the Queen Edith Ward, more about that in a moment. So what's the purpose of tonight? We're going to hear from the candidates for whom you will be voting, based on questions that you have submitted to the forum. The candidates have not seen the questions, very important to say. And they're going to answer them in turn, and I'm going to keep an eye on the clock to give them all a fair shout. And we've randomly organised who's picked a number and we know which order they're all going to speak in. And then later on during the evening, we will have a question and answer session where you can ask questions. If I could ask you to keep it to questions, not statements, and keep them relatively brief. And perhaps in a format that sort of all of the candidates will have a chance to have a go at the questions that you will ask. And at the end we're going to have a little bit of fun as well. You can perhaps see some bits and pieces on the table over there. We're going to get you to vote, not vote on who you're going to vote for, but it'll become clear, it's about how the evening has impacted how you feel about who you might vote for. I'll explain more when we get to that point. So, let's have a look. As you know, half the world's population is voting this year. So this is very much part of our chance to take part in democracy. And it's great to see you all here engaging in that. Thank you very much for being with us. Really important that we vote, we know why. Just to say a little bit about what Cambridge City Council does for us. It provides services relating to, amongst other things, parks and open spaces, waste collection, parking, council housing, town ploughing. And it organises the Cambridge Folk Festival as well. And it meets at the Guildhall, that's its home. And I think it has an office in Mandela House as well in Regent Street. And just so you know, at the moment, the make-up of the council, which is currently Labour majority controlled, is twenty-five Labour councillors, eleven Lib Dems, four Greens, one Conservative and one Independent. So why should we be voting? Well, everything that the council does impacts on many of the services that we use on a day-to-day basis. And this is part of choosing who makes those decisions. And we can vote for candidates who perhaps have a similar vision to how they want the city to develop to us. And also, the number of people that each candidate represents is much smaller than in a general election, which means that each of your single vote probably has even more of an impact on your daily lives. So really important to vote. Couple of fun facts about voting. You can change your mind, sort of. If you vote in person, if you go in apparently, and you mark the ballot paper, as long as you haven't yet put the ballot paper in the ballot box, if you change your mind in that short walk, you can sway the polling station staff to destroy your ballot paper and give you a new one there and then. Once you put it in the box, there's nothing going back. If the polling station allows dogs, you can take your dog with you. But if you go by horse or pony, you have to tear up your horse and pony outside. That's what we're thinking, sorry about that. Right, down to business. The candidates' names that we will see on the voting papers are Eric Barrett-Patton from the Conservative Party, Immy Blackburn-Horgan from the Liberal Democrat Party, Oliver Fisher from the Green Party, and Beth Gardner-Smith from the Labour Party. And if you want more information about how the whole system works, cambridge.gov.uk/elections-in-2024 will give you everything you need to know. Now, a few points about the people we have here today, and one who sadly not with us because he's unwell. So Eric Barrett-Patton from the Conservatives wasn't able to be here because he's unwell, more of him in a moment. Immy Blackburn-Horgan, I'm doing this in alphabetical order, that's the fairest way to do it for the Liberal Democrat Party, she's in the middle there. First came to Cambridge as an student in 2001. She was helped with some educational disabilities encouraged in the STEM subjects by a physicist at Coventry. And she spent time in Berlin and had a background in volunteering. Oliver Fisher, they will say more about themselves as well when they talk to you. Oliver Fisher here, on my left is for the Green Party. He's been a parish councillor in Teversham, which he did for nine years. That gave him an insight into the workings of local government. And he says he understands the effort needed to collaborate with others and get things done. And then Beth Gardner-Smith for the Labour Party, the LEL, it's in Queen Edith. She founded and leads an award-winning charity which works with child refugees in the UK and across Europe. She's a parent with a child in her local school and is particularly interested in SEND, the Special Educational Needs and Disabilities Provision, road safety and antisocial behaviour. So, let's get started. The first thing I'm going to do is just to read a statement from the Conservative Party candidate who can't be with us, which we received today. We knew he wasn't going to be with us, but he received this today. So he says, "Dear residents of Queen Edith, please accept my apologies that I am unable to join you tonight for health reasons. I'm proud to be standing this year as your Conservative candidate for Queen Edith's ward. I've lived in South Cambridge for decades on Braystoke Road and many, many years ago was fortunate enough to represent parts of modern-day Queen Edith as your councillor. I hope this year to be given that opportunity again. I'm standing for the Conservatives to offer residents a real choice. Labour and the Lib Dems aren't listening to many residents of our community. They backed the congestion charge. Now they are supporting the Labour Mayor's road charging plans across Cambridgeshire. There are road reclassification plans, if pursued, would see dozens of roads closed across our city, adding to the traffic chaos that their poor management of roadworks has caused. As your councillor, if I may, keeping driving free my top priority whilst working to find genuine travel alternatives, such as light rail for our city. I'll also work with the police to tackle crime, antisocial behaviour and keep our family-friendly community as safe as possible. I hold the council to account for their decisions, such as raising council rents whilst wasting £20 million renovating their own offices. Above all, I will be a strong voice for Queen Edith Ward, working within a small but dedicated Conservative team to stand up for residents, not ideological interests. Thank you, Eric." So unfortunately, that's what we can hear from Eric this evening. I'd just like you to spend three minutes introducing yourself and telling us a little bit about your background and how you come to be standing as a candidate.
So first, I just want to say thanks very much to the Queen Edith Forum for organising this event this evening. And I would say to Sean for comparing. I mean, it is, I think, you know, a great example of Queen Edith, that we have these types of hustings. They don't take place across the city. And we're one of the few wards that do have these hustings. And I think it's a great example of the type of community that Queen Edith is, which is, you know, a community with quite a distinct identity, a real community, a field to, there's lots going on, and really, you know, great community involvement. So thank you so much for organising and having me here to talk about why I'm standing for the council this time round. So, my name's Beth, I am a local resident here in Queen Edith. I was born at the Rose and Maternity and grew up around here until I was about 11 years old. And in fact, I've just met again somebody that I went to morning school with. So it's just wonderful to come back and sort of reconnect with Queen Edith's community. So I did return with my family and, as Sean says, I've got a child in a local school now. And I came back to Queen Edith because of, you know, the distinct nature of Queen Edith and what a fantastic place it is to live. And I do really believe that, you know, there are, I know lots of issues will be raised this evening. Lots of things that people want to see improved across the ward and across the city. But I do genuinely think it's a fantastic community to live in. And I'm very proud to be representing Labour and hoping to stand and become your city councillor and represent Queen Edith in your views. A bit about my background. I, as Sean says, for the last, best part of the last eight years, I have set up and been running as chief exec a charity that operates across Europe. And we assist vulnerable children, who happen to be refugees, many of whom are unaccompanied. And I did that because I had a very formative experience having travelled to Calais and realised that there were very many children there who were separated from families and didn't have any support or assistance. But what does that mean about me really? I'm not standing to work with refugees here in Queen Edith. But what it means is that I know how to run an organisation. I also know how to work with government, local authorities and national governments to get things done and to advocate for communities. And I particularly know how to advocate for people who often feel like they're shut out of the process and the system, who don't feel like they have a voice. And that's particularly true when you talk about children and refugees. So why do I want to stand for Queen Edith and represent the views of Queen Edith on the City Council for Labour? As I said, I think it's a fantastic place to live. But Queen Edith is also, as you all know, at the point of real change, you know? In fact, lots of the big questions, you know, are being raised within Queen Edith. How do we see sustainable development? What does that look like? If we want to build affordable housing, how can we do that in a way that protects our important biodiversity and natural environment? And also shares, you know, the resources and the benefits of that development equally across communities? And has a light footprint and impact on local communities, of which, you know, we are one, which obviously our local campus is, you know, a big area of development for us. And I know a big concern for people with the green belt as well. So I think, you know, Queen Edith, there's a lot going on in Queen Edith. It's a site of real change and development. And I would love to see a Labour city councillor representing this community for the first time and I think a number of years, to put forward the Labour agenda, which is all about sharing that prosperity for all, you know, tackling, supporting people with the cost of living crisis at the moment and also seeing sustainable development within our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Beth.
Okay, before I start, I firstly like us to show our appreciation to Queen Edith Community Forum for organising this event, to St John's for hosting, and thank you to all who are attending or watching the hustings. Okay, over to me. My name is Imogen, but many people I've met over the years in Queen Edith probably know me best as Immy. Myself and my family have lived in Queen Edith for the past six years. Whilst working in the NHS, I completed my biomedical degree via a apprenticeship. As a local person living here, having a range of disabilities, undertaking care as responsibilities for my family, wanting but not being able to afford my own home here, I am well aware of how tough people are finding it today. That's why, long before I was lucky enough to become your Lib Dem representative, I have been actively involved in local community initiatives. I've been engaged in areas such as Mountingle Garden, Hope's Garden, the QE Community Forum, its skip days and food hub. As a police cadet leader, I have a commitment to spreading the good work of the local neighbourhood watch schemes. Since having the honour of being elected as your Lib Dem city councillor, I recognise my status has changed. However, if I am to be described as a politician, then this means working with the community. From working with the families of Queen Edith, I would say I've come to understand local people know their community best. Solutions are often community-led, coming from people's knowledge of their own patch. They are not centralised or top-down, rather small-scale, engaging and valuing local people's views, opinions and expertise. That being said, I recognise the bigger picture as it affects Cambridge today, the UK's fastest-growing city, with all the benefits and tensions this creates. So my politics is about fairness, the growth of the city, its ongoing need to be sustainable and the wealth it creates needs to be shared equally. At one level, I'm a city councillor, plugged into the decision-making processes, attended Harvard's community to prioritise our poll problems. At another level, I'm a street-level politician, taking part in speedwatch sessions to combat antisocial driving. On the strategic level, I've met the CUH governors and chief executive teams to promote the need for a neighbourhood impact report to investigate the unintended consequences of biomedical campus expansion, be that parking stress or environmental degradation. More locally, with an emphasis on environmental sustainability, I've supported Mountingle Garden's biodiversity bid and I'm working with residents on various streets to promote biodiversity or finding ways to preserve our verges. I have contributed six years' community action in Queen Edith, with nearly six months now as your city councillor. This has led me to an approach of helping the community, best summed up in the support I gave on a local bid for a school street. As a community champion, I was well aware of concerns of parents for their children's safety from speeding cars and motorbikes. And as a local councillor, I'm also aware of the government research that walking on wheel there needs to increase so parking problems from schools are not pushed onto neighbouring streets. I was engaged in Queen Edith long before I became your local city councillor and I can achieve so much more for the community as your elected city councillor if you again give me your support. Thank you.
Hi, so my name's Oliver Fisher, I'll be your repartee candidate for this election. I'm also standing as the Green Party candidate for South Cambridgeshire at the parliamentary elections as well. I don't live in this ward, but I have lived in this area for a long time. So I've been in this area for about fifteen years. I spent about twelve years in Teversham, which is fantastic, and I worked nearby. Basically, I was asked to stand in this ward because I couldn't stand in the ward that I live in. And I was very keen to do so. I believe passionately in local government and I think I could have made a real difference on the council. Having worked as a parish councillor for nine years, and I did try to see it as work, it was like an additional thing, it was volunteering, but it's something that, you know, you have to put effort into. I learnt a lot about local government and learnt a lot about how the city council kind of works through that work as well. I've been active in the Green Party for ten years. And I think, you know, I was looking for a political home, it took some time to kind of find one. But when I finally found the Green Party, you know, it's a fantastic kind of group of people to kind of work with. And I know that the Greens are doing some great work in the city and, you know, making some real progress, you know, being elected to the city council. While I was involved with Teversham Parish Council, I was on the finance committee and I was also vice-chair for a year. We delivered lots of projects in the area, so we delivered the new skate park, we delivered a community orchard, a new sports pavilion, and, you know, did lots of other good work in the village. Obviously, as you'd expect, I'm particularly interested in environmental issues. So if you elect me, you know, I'll be focused on things like green spaces, air quality, public transport, also the cost of living crisis at the moment and water security. But I would of course listen to all of you as local residents and, you know, I was focused on the issues that are important to you. So if you want to elect me as councillor, I would work to deliver for Queen Edith and I would also leverage the existing Green councillors on the city council to kind of get things done. So Cambridge and Queen Edith is a wonderful place to live and I want to do my bit to make life here just a little bit better. Thank you.
So the first question is, as a Queen Edith's councillor, what would your role, what role would you play in the development proposals for the biomedical campus? So the biomedical campus, as we all know, just on our doorstep, in our patch, huge development proposals there. So we want to hear a little bit about from each candidate, what role you would play in the development process. There's obviously lots of different authorities, lots of things coming into play here. But the city council has, and its councillors have, a word on this as well. So, Imogen, if I can just turn to you, you work in that zone I think as well, so perhaps have a bit of awareness of that as well. So what sort of role do you think as a city councillor, as a councillor in our ward, right by the campus there, you would be able to play as that develops?
You're right, that is a very good question and it's very pertinent at the moment with the new hospitals going forward, especially with the concerns from the Environment Agency relating to the water table. I'd need to look at the whole development in order to make any opinionated comments about whether or not it should or should not go forward. But in relation to what I've already done, as I mentioned previously, I've been in meetings with the directorate and the executive team of CUH about the unintended consequences on all of the local residents due to this development and just the CBC as it is now. Currently, they're working with me to produce a neighbourhood impact report to see what impacts they have had, how that could be mitigated with the future developments, and how the locals could also work with them to improve the situation. Additionally, as you mentioned, I do work within Adam Brooks. I'm in the genomics lab at the moment, which is a very nice place, I would say. But yes, I would work with them and listen to residents' concerns.
Immy Blackburn-Horgan, thank you very much. But I'll turn now to Oliver Fisher from the Green Party and pose the same question to you. So as a councillor, as our councillor, if you were elected, how, what role would you play in that, in the development proposals for the biomedical campus?
Yeah, so, yeah, very interesting question. So I think the things that I would be looking at in particular, you know, first maybe make a statement about, I am supportive of growth in Cambridge and I think, you know, having developments is really important. And obviously, we are a hub, you know, for science and that's fantastic. But I do think that, you know, the growth is perhaps going too far, maybe too fast as well. And with the issues around water scarcity in, you know, in this area, I think we have to look very carefully at building more within the city kind of framework. So, yeah, I would be looking in particular at the water scarcity issues around any future developments. I also, you know, I also know that public transport is a massive issue. So if we, if we keep building places where people have to commute to those places because they probably can't, lots of people can't afford to live in the city, there's not enough housing stock in the city, and they have to therefore drive, you know, I would be looking at, I would be looking at the public transport infrastructure to try to make sure that that was, you know, sustainable and, you know, that that was accessible to people. One of the things that the Green Party particularly, you know, there's been a lot of debate over the last few years about the congestion charge. But one of the things that the Green Party has talked about is workplace levies. So this would be like a tax on parking spaces. So that would be, again, I think, something that I would be interested in kind of exploring. So that we could, you know, tax the parking spaces on any new site and use that money to invest further in public transport.
Thank you, Oliver Fisher, Green Party. Let's pass the microphone to Beth Gardner-Smith of the Labour Party and pose the same question, thinking about the biomedical campus and the role that a councillor in our ward could play as those plans develop.
Great, thank you. I think as a local resident, sometimes the decision-making structure around these developments can feel totally impenetrable. And I think particularly for Cambridge, where we have, you know, lots of different authorities and bodies who have a say in some of these developments. It can feel like, you know, local residents actually can't get their views heard and voices heard. And actually, that is, you know, for me, that is the most important role that I could play as your city councillor, is to make sure that Queen Edith residents, you know, who are going to be some of the most impacted people across Cambridge, have their views properly expressed and heard in those decision-making, in that decision-making. And Cambridge City Council is, you know, has an important role to play in the decision around future development of the biomedical campus. And, you know, we've just heard that the cancer hospital has just, literally just been approved, which is fantastic. But what I think is really interesting there is what Cambridge City Council did is to say, actually, in order to approve this hospital, you need to show us future water usage. Because we're so worried about, you know, the water scarcity issue across Cambridge here, you've got to show us that actually, not just, you know, in your plans, you're going to be, you know, use water sustainably, but actually, in future, you've got to prove it to us. And I think that shows you how a city council can play a really important role in ensuring sustainability of these developments. Because, you know, and Cambridge Labour and our manifesto have said, you know, new development has to put environmental sustainability at its heart. And really, that's proof of, you know, what that means in practice and what Labour City Council is doing to ensure that happens in practice. Because we all know that developers can, you know, say things in their plans and that actually, you know, once the development is happening, sometimes things don't seem to go that way. So as your local councillor, I would, I would be first and foremost representing local residents' views in that process.
Thank you very much, Beth Gardner-Smith of the Labour Party. If anything occurs to you as you're hearing these answers, that you have a burning question that you'd like to ask at this point, whilst it's fresh in your mind, we'd perhaps be happy to take one too if you have a question. Otherwise, we'll come back to some questions at the end. But as you hear the answers as well, have a reflection on what you've heard and whether you have any questions that relate to those. But if there's no burning question on that at this particular moment, oh, there is, okay, let's have a...
Just a quick one.
Maybe we should just have a quick microphone so that we can hear you on them.
What is the view of potential candidates on Mr Gove's statement of building 250,000 or more houses in this area?
Actually, do you know what? I'm going to combine that with actually what was the next question. It's almost like you saw my sheet. If you'll allow me, because it's sort of, we can play it into that as well. So the next question from one of our readers of the online newsletter is that Queen Edith, like the rest of the city, is under great pressure to build more housing. Here we go. So how do you propose to rebalance the relationship between developers and residents? Our questioner says he or she believes that at the moment the developers have the upper hand. But let's roll that into what the gentleman was asking as well, and say broadly speaking, what do you all feel about the prospect of this large number of houses being built? It's obviously had national attention, it's got a specific mention in the budget. So I think we're going to now begin with Ollie on this question, taking it, taking the random selection as we had it. So Ollie, if you could address the pressure on housing, whether developers have the upper hand, and broadly speaking, have your thoughts on this very large number of houses, a large number of which will probably end up, if it goes ahead, very close, if not in this ward?
Yeah, so this is, this is obviously an enormous issue for Cambridge and Cambridgeshire. I think it's supposed to be 150,000 new homes. I think that's, I don't think that's like all close to Cambridge, it would be in the surrounding areas as well. But I just, I just can't see that that number is a sustainable number. You know, I think we all know that the infrastructure as it stands now is creaking and, you know, people struggle to get into the city because the public transport just isn't, you know, suitable. And I know there's investment happening into that, but these things tend to take a long, long time. And what I, what I am keen to see is that we invest in that infrastructure now and maybe slow down on the development and certainly not push for 150,000 homes. It has to be something a lot more sensible. What I am, I'm not opposed to development though, so I, you know, I think development should happen, but it has to happen in the right place. We need affordable homes, we probably need, you know, more high-density homes in the city because, and with people that are living and working in the city as well, so that people can cycle or walk to work. But at the moment, I do think the developers have the upper hand and they're not necessarily building the homes that we need in the right places and creating the communities that myself as a Green Party candidate would like to see. So, you know, there's some great work going on and there are some good developments. But in the main, I think we're probably just building the wrong houses in the wrong places and it's not sustainable as it stands.
So do you feel as a councillor you have some role that you can...
Well, of course, the role would be around planning. So, you know, and like I said, I'm not, I'm not, I won't be there to kind of block every development, but it has to be, it has to be considered and it has to be done in a way that is absolutely sustainable and creating green spaces as well. to be done in a way that is absolutely sustainable, and creating green spaces as well, so not just concreting over, you know, Cambridgeshire.
Great, Oliver Fisher from the Green Party. So I'm going to pass the microphone now to Beth, Beth Galverson Smith of the Labour Party, and the same question to you. Let's tie it into the gentleman's question as well. Your thoughts about this large number of houses that's supposed to come here, and who has the upper hand at the moment, and how you might play a role in that?
Well, it's a great example of how top-down decisions can be made, right? You know, I wonder how many of you rolled your eyes when you saw that headline or heard that announcement? You know, and the fact that Labour City Council have not even been informed or, you know, asked to be, you know, consulted at all on this, you know, supposed fantastic new plan for Cambridge. You know, and that shows the importance of consultation and proper understanding of an area and what it can sustain. And, you know, we do have an emerging local plan for Cambridge, we've got an existing local plan, an emerging local plan, which is in development at the moment, which sets out, you know, a sustainable vision for development across Cambridge. And of course, there needs to be more engagement with local communities as that continues to be developed and finalised. But that's how you, you know, how you go about developing a city and building houses, and having those difficult conversations about where those houses are built, what resources are needed to make them sustainable, to make sure that local residents are unduly impacted by them, and also delivering affordable houses for people who really need them, because we know so many people across Cambridge, you know, feel priced out, and are struggling to afford the cost of housing across Cambridge. But I think you can tell that my unhealthy disdain for, you know, for Michael Gove and his un-evidenced plan for Cambridge, when we do have an emerging local plan that the City Council has been working on and needs further engagement with Queen Edith residents. And suppose that, you know, that would be my role, if I was elected to the City Council, would be to engage really proactively, and really pleased that we've got the executive councillor for planning here, who's a Labour councillor, and I met with them just this week to discuss, you know, the development of planning across Queen Ediths. And I think there's a role that can certainly be played there by a Labour City councillor, working on the City Council to represent Queen Edith's views.
Thank you very much. So let's pass the microphone to Emmy, and the same question to you, about the pressure of housing, and whether you feel the developers have the upper hand at the moment, and what you feel about the prospect of that large number of houses coming to this part of the world?
Well, first of all, I would say that as a growing city, Cambridge does require some new housing, but this plan of Gove's 250,000, I'm not even sure where he plans to put them, I don't think we've got that much room. But in relation to any new housing, I don't think it should be built without consideration for the local water table and the infrastructure surrounding it. Additionally, there should be provisions such as community centres, shops and other amenities. I believe we should also look to maintain the older properties, council, social housing, privately rented, due to the numerous times dampened mould have been raised as concerns. A concern that many residents have brought to me is the number of HMOs and PMBs and garden rooms being used as family living spaces? That was a very strange one. Apparently, one resident has raised some families living in someone's garden gym, and this was only really raised because the family was having a baby and needed an additional door that didn't fit with planning. I was very saddened by this, it was a strange situation. Obviously, we need more housing, but it needs to be affordable. There's a HMO, six-bed, where one room is £1,350 a month. I can't afford that. I don't know who can. And these HMOs, this over-occupancy, its impact on parking stress and waste management, which can lead to problems with vermin and other... It just needs management, and it needs properly looking after, is what I would say. So more housing that's affordable and decent quality.
Thank you very much, Emma McBurnhorn from the Liberal Democrats. We'll take, maybe we can take a couple of questions relating to this question perhaps? Yeah, that's interesting.
Hi, so as we're on housing, my question is, as we do need more housing in the city, I believe we need, I believe we need more social housing. Can the panel, can the panel explain the difference between affordable housing and social rent housing, and if they think that we should have more social housing for the people at the very bottom of the ladder?
Okay, I maybe I could take one more. Can we wrap that into the same subject?
It's slightly unrelated.
Okay, if it's unrelated, I'm going to...
It's about Michael Gove's announcement.
Okay, all right.
If such an announcement...
Sir, can you point the microphone to your mouth, please?
Sorry.
Thank you.
If Michael Gove had made an announcement like that without even consulting with the local council, and there is now a Cambridge delivery group, which is sort of at a higher level, then what is the relevance of the council, and how can they improve housing development plans?
Great, so a couple of very good questions there, that's great, thank you. About, do we understand the difference between social housing and affordable housing? And I suppose in some ways, is power being taken away from the council level if such unexpected announcements are being made at such a high level? In some ways, Beth, I think you sort of alluded to that, you mentioned that. But let's just very quickly, the microphone is in front of you, do you want to take that one first, and then we can just go round, we'll just do a quick fire?
Sure, we'll just go backwards the way we did.
Yeah.
Okay, so I believe affordable housing should be affordable to everyone, and the social housing should be available to you if you need it, that's really all it should be. It shouldn't be a very complicated system of criteria that you have to follow or hoops you have to jump through, it should just be that you need it and your local council supports you. And really, that's my view of local council. Local council is local, it looks at local issues, local communities, lets them solve the issues in ways that work for them. Big government does the international stuff, the complicated policies, the things we need but that don't affect us as individuals. That's why we have a local council versus a national government. And national government can make their big plans, but if it doesn't work for the local community, then is the local council's job to mitigate it, to change the plan or work within the system to make sure that it doesn't negatively impact on people that they are there to protect?
I'm assuming that's move to Beth. So, do we understand the difference between those two types of housing and government being imposed from a very high level onto us locally, what do we think?
Yeah, absolutely. And you're right, we need both, we need affordable housing and we need social housing as well, which is council housing, as many people know of it. And actually, I'm really proud that this Labour council has built more social housing than almost any other councils I understand there across the country. So it's one of our pledges for this election, it's one of the top priorities of the council, and it's so important. And what's even more important and great, I think, is that that council housing, that social housing, has been built at really high environmental standards as well, so it's sort of, you know, it's both tackling the climate crisis, so building more social housing that we need. But also, you know, the Labour council has, you know, has a commitment to see new development have 40% affordable housing, any new development, and of that 40% affordable housing, 75% should be social housing, housing for social rents. So that's, you know, it shows the commitment there, I think, in any new development, that we want to see that being affordable to local residents, as well as people who might come and work in Cambridge and grow our city in the future. And in terms of how sort of announcements like this can be imposed on the council, yeah, so, you know, I understand, you know, understand that, you know, there wasn't really much consultation before that announcement was made, but there is now consultation happening, because of course they have to work with the, you know, the City Council to push forward the plans. So it, you know, it has to, but, you know, obviously, we think more consultation should and could be happening, particularly in the context of a new local emerging plan that is, you know, that is underway and under consultation.
Thanks very much, and Oliver, back to you on this question. So the difference, do we understand the difference between social and affordable housing, and how do we feel about some announcements being made at the national level that have a big impact locally?
Okay, thank you. I'll start with the second one first, I think, because it's quite, I think it's quite quick and it's quite clear. So imposition of central governments is just not acceptable. I think the government can make comments, and it can create, you know, it can maybe say, we would like Cambridge to have more development, more houses, but ultimately, it should be down to local bodies to make those decisions, and the local bodies then are obviously, you know, beholden to the local communities. Now, I know that can create some tension, because often local communities don't want new developments, so, but I just think these targets from central government, it's just not, it's just not a good approach. In terms of the, you know, the difference between social housing and affordable housing, obviously, yes, I completely understand that, and I would commend, you know, the Labour local councillors for building, you know, not large numbers of social houses, but, you know, a decent number of social housing, it's really important for the city, and also building them to a high environmental standard, because obviously I would see that as being very important. I think the thing about affordable housing in the city is that often developments are, you know, the developers are encouraged to have affordable homes within their developments, but the problem is that are they really affordable to people that live and work in this city? And I think the issue there is fundamentally that, you know, the cost of the land is so high, that then the houses have to be very expensive, or they have to be very small. You know, it's really difficult, we need homes for people in the city that are affordable and affordable to people who are maybe of quite low incomes, and I just don't see that happening at the moment. I don't know how to solve, well, it's not very easy to solve that within the city kind of framework, but, yeah, absolutely needs to be more work done on that.
Okay, let's have a change.